We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, April 15th, 2021. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlicker, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Navlock.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Smolky.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Bradley is absent.
Thank you. All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda. So moves.
I'll second it, Chair Schwartz.
Motion by Geisler, second by Navlock, on favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Agenda's been adopted. Next, we have the minutes of our March 18th meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Heikala.
I move to approve the minutes from our March 18th meeting.
I'll second Commissioner Heikala's.
Motion by Heikala, second by Navlock. Any corrections or additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved. Our first order of business this evening is Planning Case 21-10, Preliminary Platte for Summer Chase, 5th Edition, Eagle Circle, Landform Professional Services. Mr. Harlicker.
Yes, the first item tonight is that Summer Chase Preliminary Platte. The site is located at the end of Eagle Circle, Drake Street, 105th. It is about a 7.7 acre lot. Much of the site is wetland, which is this area here. About 6.5 acres is wetland and about 1.2 acres is the buildable area, which is really at the end of the Eagle Circle cul-de-sac. The preliminary in platte involves extending, that's a better view here, Eagle Circle into the area that's got the high ground, and they'll be constructing three single-family lots. And the lots will range in size from 16,000 to 18,000 square feet, at least that's what was proposed. Staff is recommending to extend these lot lines back to the rear of Outlet A, so Outlet A will be incorporated into the three existing lots. What happens when you have isolated outlots like this, they tend to just go tax forfeiture over time. So it's been our policy to try to keep that from happening wherever we can and just extending the lot lines back through, so each of these lots will also incorporate part of the wetland area. This dashed area here is a required wetland buffer. The dashed area here will be the limits of grading. The lots will all be walkout lots, and the lots all comply with the dimensional requirements of the LDR2 Low Density Residential 2 zoning district. Park dedication is required for the three lots. That'll have to be paid prior to releasing the platte for recording. It's a total of $6,000 or $2,000 per lot. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary platte with the conditions that all comments of the city engineer be addressed. The property lines of the three lots be extended to the rear lot line of Outlet A. Park dedication in the amount of $6,000 or $2,000 per lot for three lots be paid prior to releasing the platte for recording, and one street tree be required for each lot to be planted at the time of building permit. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harlicker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlicker at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlicker, is there a maximum lot size for LDR2 with the extension of that, obviously some of those, that central one looks like it's going to get a couple acres.
A maximum?
Yeah.
No, there's not.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Harlicker, the cul-de-sac that's going to be put in, is that going to be part of a public road then or a private road?
Chair Schwartz, it will be public.
And Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Harlicker? Is the petitioner present, anything they'd like to say? If you'd like to speak, please come to the mic, give your name and address for the record.
My name's Larry Schwartz. I'm at 1543 105th Lane. I've got just a couple, four things to mention here quickly.
Excuse me, Chair Schwartz, are you here for the public hearing component of it?
Yeah.
Well, I haven't called a public hearing yet, sir.
Sorry.
Is the petitioner present? Mr. Harlicker, as far as you know?
We're not.
You're not, all right. Okay, well, then at this time, we do need a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes.
Again, my name's Larry Schwartz, 1543 105th Lane, so it's the corner lot there, probably the one that's going to be most affected by all this. Four quick points. First, some concern about environmental issues. There's additional runoff from what was formerly green space now channeled into this smaller-sized wetland. I hope it doesn't cause issues for existing property owners because the water does come up pretty high at times. I might expect to be compensated, by the way, if, you know, I start to experience flooding. Second is that previously, at least a couple times, I was here, Planning Commission assured everyone that there would be no development on that outlot. I'd like to remind the commission that people make decisions based on those kinds of promises and assurances. This development is likely to have significant negative impact on my property value, and if I would have known that this was going to be in play, I might have put my house up for sale a number of years ago and got out of dot. Third thing is, I would recommend to the developers, if they're here today, that they don't throw good money after bad by moving forward, because if they do, I intend to take legal action to the fullest extent possible. I don't think there's going to be enough profit in their three lots for the legal fees they're going to run. And then finally, I might respectfully suggest to the commission that a way out of this mess and for the commission to honor their previous assurances and commitments would be for the city to just purchase the lot, combine it with the one right next door they already own, turn it into dedicated green space or parkway, something like that. That would be, I think, would be the best way forward with this. And with that, I'll let somebody else speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing?
My name is Ron Hallstrom. I live at 1552 106th Avenue Northwest, so I'm basically straight across from this development, so the houses per se aren't probably going to affect me. I guess one of my concerns is, what he just said, is that on more than one occasion, I've had water come close to my back fence when it gets, you know, rainy season or early in the spring and stuff. I've had times in July where my back fence posts start to move and do this type of stuff, and I can dig down, I'm not getting like a foot, and water starts filling in. That's how high the water table is back there, so I'm kind of concerned what he's saying that this is going to push more water down into that area, so that does concern me that the water could come up into my yard. So I'd be opposed to this moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Handeland, 10558 Drake Street Northwest. I really more had a question, just don't know if anybody here could answer it or not, but I was just wondering what is the meaning of the pink flags?
Meaning of what?
There's recently been pink flags put in. I thought they might be like wetland delineation, but I was just wondering if those were wetland delineation or back property lines or if anyone...
Chair Schwartz, typically, flags of that nature are used to delineate edge of wetlands.
All right, thank you.
I can't say for certain, but typically, that's what they're for.
Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Last call for the public hearing. Mr. Buccioni, anybody on Zoom?
Just me, Chair Schwartz.
All right. All right, at this time, we will close the public hearing and restrict comments to the commission.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Navlock.
I have a question pertaining to if the city engineer and the city staff, if they've done analysis of, or their review of the gradient or the water table in this area, in this platte?
Commissioner Navlock, I'm not sure if the city engineer has taken that into consideration or looked at that as part of his review. Typically with lots and developments, we do get soil borings of the areas that are going to be developed, so they can determine where the water table is on those lots. So I don't know if he's examined that information or not.
Okay.
I assume they've done a thorough engineering analysis of the data that they have. With development proposals, they make sure that the design is such that any additional runoff, typically would be for the cul-de-sac extension, is taken care of within the city's And then the runoff for the lots and the houses would stay on site, and that's one of the reasons they have the wetland mitigation area and buffer area to help control any runoff from the yards before it gets into the wetland.
Thank you for answering my second question I was going to ask on the mitigation that the city has for a borderline piece of land with water issues, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlicker, you're saying the city storm system will have play in that area?
The runoff?
Yes, you can see here, there'll be catch basins in the cul-de-sac that'll tie into the existing stormwater in Eagle Circle. So any runoff that's in the street will go to that catch basin and then go out and into the city stormwater system.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smolky.
So I'm going to stay on that just for a second here, but just to be clear, any runoff in terms of from the homes, the property, et cetera, that's going to go, be directed back to the existing wetlands, correct? That doesn't get picked up by the cul-de-sac and the outlets there, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Smolky. When the engineering department looks at the grading plan, one of the things they do look at is to ensure that any potential runoff is controlled on site and doesn't go off onto adjacent properties.
Okay, and so I haven't actually been to the specific site. I understand where it is and so forth, I haven't been there specifically, so the grading and so forth, that is yet to be done, right? They're not as-is, so is there additional elevation that needs to be added? Is there improvements that we know need to be made in order to prevent, you know, water from getting into those homes, first of all?
Yeah, typically, when they do grading of larger lots like this, they move the, the grading is done on site, they typically don't bring dirt in. They'll level out the terrain to make it okay, and then in this case, they'll probably take, I don't know what the existing topography is, but it looks like it's probably higher up front, and they'll push it back a ways and create a slope for the walkout basements.
Correct, and it has to make sure that it runs in a direction that it can't impede upon the neighboring lots, right? They can't, right, it has to go someplace where it can...
That's correct, that's one of the items that the city engineering department looks at.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments?
Commissioner Schwartz, the applicant has just arrived, so if you have any questions of the applicant, he's here to answer them.
All right. Would you like, you missed Mr. Harlicker's presentation, but if you'd like to come up and give us a short presentation, we'd be more than welcome to have you. Could you name an address for the record, please?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I'm Todd Olin, I'm with Landform. I'm at 9464 194th in Becker Township. I am sorry I'm late, I apologize for that. I have read all the reports done by Scott and his staff as well as in engineering, and I just wanted to say, I'm certain he probably reviewed all the details that we submitted, as well as his review of the zoning and how it applies here. I just wanted to go on record saying that we have had a chance to go through all the comments, we're completely comfortable with all the comments that were included in the reports, so, without having to restate what he's already said. I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Is it Mr. Olin?
It is.
Did you say? Hi. So there were some concerns expressed about the runoff, you know, because it is such low land. Are you okay with all the engineer's comments? And that's part of the report, you said?
Correct.
And that can alleviate runoff, and that's a concern of the neighbors in the area?
Yeah, and, you know, given the size of the upland area and the distance that the stormwater runs across the land, we're relying on the grass itself to be a filter before it hits the actual wetland area for the stormwater that's going to be going to the rear. And then, basically, the crest of the homes or the roofline of the homes forward, they'll be running into the road and be collected in the existing stormwater system. So we did review that with the city engineer, we reviewed it with the Coon Creek watershed on a preliminary basis, and it seemed both parties were comfortable going in that direction.
So then, adjacent properties, not necessarily those three lots, but adjacent properties are kind of going to be isolated from that water table or runoff?
Yeah, this won't contribute to any flooding problems based on just the size, and what we did is a calculation to see what the additional runoff would be, if any, measured at the property line. So rainfall falls, it falls on the roof, it falls on the yard, and then it travels across the yard and absorbs. There really wasn't a measurable accumulation based on the impervious surface that we're adding here. So to put in BMPs, or Best Management Practices, for stormwater for a site this size, really wouldn't have any benefit, with the exception of the standard construction practices and things of that nature. But there wouldn't be any measurable increase in water elevation to the adjacent properties or flooding or anything of that nature.
Okay, and you're talking walkout basements?
That's correct.
For these three properties?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else from the commission? Anyone ready to make a motion?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Smolky.
Let me get this straight here, sorry. Okay, so in Planning Case 21-10, I make a motion to approve the preliminary platte with the following conditions: that all comments of the city engineer be addressed, that the property lines of the three lots be extended to the rear lot line of Outlet A, that park dedication in the amount of $6,000, which represents $2,000 per lot for three lots, be paid prior to releasing the platte for recording, and one street tree is required for each lot to be planted at the time of the building permit.
Second.
Motion by Smolky, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and will be heard by the City Council at their March, or excuse me, May 4th meeting. Thank you, and good luck. All right, our second case this evening is Planning Case 21-8, a land use amendment to change land use from commercial mixed use to moderate density residential, 11400 Robinson Drive, Landform Service. Mr. Harlicker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, this is again, similar to last month, kind of a two-part application. The applicant is asking for both a land use plan amendment and a zone change for this site off of Robinson Drive. This is a Wells Fargo Bank, it's a church in this location, townhouses along here, and a single-family residence then here on the east. Site is about 2.63 acres, is mostly wooded. The only furniture it has is this rather narrow piece along Robinson Drive, so most of the site is back here and is not visible from Robinson Drive. The site is currently guided commercial mixed use, and what's being proposed is to change the land use designation from that to moderate density residential. Moderate density residential is a designation that's generally for attached housing, such as townhomes, at a density of 5 to 10 units per acre. The proposed density is compatible with the townhouses to the south, and the church, and the bank on the north and west, as well as the single-family dwelling to the east. We looked at it and compared it to relevant sections of the comprehensive land use plan. One of the stated policies is to identify underused non-residential sites that are suitable for higher-density residential, and our staff believes that this site does fit that category. The site is generally not really suitable for commercial development because of the way it's laid out, the surrounding land uses, and the fact that the bulk of the site is not really visible from the street. Another policy is that the city reviews its regulations periodically for residential districts and see if there's areas of the city that are better suited for residential development, and staff believes that this site fits that policy of the city's land use plan also. So in Planning Case 21-8, staff is recommending approval of the proposed land use amendment based on the three criteria identified in the staff report. We could go into and include the discussion on the zone change and do separate motions and separate public hearings if you'd like.
That'd be fine.
Corresponding request for a zone change would be from general commercial to moderate density residential. As you can see, it's office here, the bank is general commercial, the single-family house, this line should be moved over and it should be about this location here, is also general commercial, and you've got townhome developments that, in a community commercial district and high-density residential district, but they're also part of a planning development. That's why they were developed at the level of a townhome development. When looking at this for the proposed zone change, similar to the comp plan, the site does fit the zoning criteria and the intent of the moderate-density residential district, which is to provide housing at moderate densities, at a density of approximately 4 to 7 units per acre. Again, and a townhome development would be more compatible with bulk of the surrounding land uses, the surrounding uses here with townhomes and the single-family home, even though it's, at this point, it's still in general commercial. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the property from, or the zone change from general commercial to moderate-density residential with the findings included in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Harlicker. I've got two questions for you before I ask the rest of the commission. The zoning map you show there, is the single-family home that's to the east of this property?
Yes.
Actually on commercial property, then?
It is. This east lot line should be adjusted, and it will be, as a technical error when we did the map, to about this location here. This is, this lot here is the single-family lot, and it corresponds to this location here on the zoning map. So it is a single-family resident that's in a general commercial zoning district.
Okay, and then my second question, which is the same question that I brought up last month when we had similar cases, is the land use change lists moderate density of 5 to 10 units, and the zoning lists moderate density is 4 to 7.
Yeah, it's a discrepancy between the two that's got to be, when we did the comp plan amendment, we adjusted the densities in the comprehensive plan, and we still have to do the associated shift within the zoning court that will require an ordinance amendment. And I believe it's probably all of our residential zoning districts.
Okay, so which is... So which is, which is the correct? Five to 10 or four to seven?
Four to seven.
And is that something that we can bring forward at a future meeting?
Yes, we can, Chair.
All right. Commissioner, anyone have any questions for Mr. Harlecker on either of these two cases at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, there's that one single-family residence you talked about to the east. There is another property just to the other side of that. Looks like a single-family home also. That sits in the general commercial?
Yes, it does, Commissioner Casey.
Also. And was it, were they just grandfathered in there and they've just been there so long? That's how it shook out?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So they'll stay there until there's a change to those properties that has to be addressed or something like that?
That's correct. Until they, or a developer, either the property owners or a developer comes in and requests the zone change at this point.
Yeah. Okay. One other thing, that little egress onto Robinson Drive, is that the in-out to that property? That's it, right?
Yes, it is.
There's nothing on the back sides? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
So in the, so in the narrative, the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning plat that was submitted, so the one discrepancy I'm seeing then, because I've read this before and I just came back to check it now, but it does state on page, is it page four? I think it is, under comprehensive plan amendment. The last sentence, the moderate-density residential land use requires five to 10 units per acre, which is consistent with our plat density. So I guess that's discrepant then with the four to seven, is it not?
Well, that was the...
Oh, actually, it does, it does, but it doesn't. Or does it not?
That was the point I brought up.
Right.
Initially, Mr. Harlecker said we need a ordinance to...
But their plan has it stated one way, so is that a concern? Is it, is it still compliant then with the requirements?
Well, at this point, we don't have a development plan.
Got it. Okay.
A development plan will have to be consistent with the current zoning.
Five point seven falls in both.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. True.
Any other questions from Mr. Harlecker? And petitioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikl.
I'm just kind of wondering if any, if there was any communication with the property owner for this single house that was there? If, you know, it would be kind of, make sense, but I mean, I know it's up to the property owner, but to kind of include that, you know, if there was any, like, any thought about buying that property owner out or anything like that?
The city has not approached the two single-family property owners. I'm not sure if the applicant can speak to that, if they've approached them.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. There was a contact made with the neighbor to the east, immediately to the east, and they just weren't interested in selling at this point. So it, you know, they backed up and just bought the, purchased a piece that was available at the time.
Okay.
As long as you're up there, is there anything else you would like to add?
No. Again, Mr. Harlecker did a thorough job and it just, we looked at a couple different uses on this particular piece of property. It seems to be inconsistent, or it seems to be consistent with the uses to the south. And as Mr. Harlecker said, there, it does, a little bit restricted on the access for, or visibility for, for a general commercial use that it's currently guided for. So it does seem to fit. One of the other consistent, or one of the other considerations we took into account here is the, the actual use we do propose on here with row homes, which I know isn't considered tonight, but is that there are a couple of easements that are across the property. So we, the townhome really lends itself well to work around those easements and keep those intact. So, so that's what we, we've done. That was a, that's the plan that you'll see, assuming this goes forward.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner, any other questions before I open a public hearing? All right. At this time, I will open a public hearing. I believe we have to have separate public hearings. So this is the public hearing for 21-8, the land use amendment change from commercial mixed use to moderate-density residential. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Please state your name for the record with your address, please.
My name is Dan Mallett, M-A-L-A-T. My address is 1905 114th Avenue Northwest. I am in the second townhome from the left, the far-left top tip. So my property is one of the, yep, exactly, right there. I bought that property about four years ago. And one of the most, biggest selling points to me was the privacy and basically the forest in my backyard. Now, I know that's not my property. I understand that someone owns it and they get to do things with it. But I'm just asking that with your decision that you help to bring privacy back or keep privacy there still? Because I, the guy was down knocking down some trees yesterday, and he basically told me their plan is to knock down every tree in there. And that, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what he told me. It sounds right. I'm concerned about the lot line. He didn't exactly know where the lot line was, but he was knocking down trees. So I'd like to make sure that the lot line is specifically identified so he doesn't knock down a tree that's, you know, that isn't his, theirs, sorry. And then, you know, find that the wildlife and just the greenery, all of that stuff, you're removing a lot of that from the earth and that, there's a lot of wildlife in there that I see. And now, I don't know where they'll be going, but they won't be laying around in there anymore. So, no comments? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to public hearing? And do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Nobody on Zoom? No one else to speak at the public hearing? We will close the public hearing and contain comments to the Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
I guess I'll just make a comment about the, the trees. I guess, you know, we are looking at kind of a, a view of the area. And I, I mean, I agree. I think it's a, it's a really lovely area to have all those trees and so forth. But when I think about, but the alternatives, you know, because of how it's currently zoned, what we're looking at, right? I, I think that it's a, a good recommendation to transition it over to the moderate so that it keeps some of that little bit more neighborhood feeling as opposed to more commercial, just to be, just to be fair from my opinion. I think that it, it does complement the, the other construction that's around that area. So clearly, this isn't the site review, right? But I just wanted to kind of respond to your comment.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
When the actual site plan comes before us, we have a lot, we have options with the landscaping that has to be addressed along the perimeter. In other cases, I know we put fencing up to ensure some privacy between properties to kind of mediate that. So that's beyond our scope tonight. But those are things we consider. Yeah. Thank you.
I address the tree issues.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as part of our evaluation, we did perform a boundary survey on this property and marked the quarters with irons and wood lath at this point. Another additional step that we've had to take is we have to take soil borings. They're preliminary soil borings, but we have to find out what the, the existing native material is onsite. And then we got to excavate down four or five feet to take infiltration rates at our proposed basin location so that we can turn around and come back to engineering and say, our infiltration rates are based on actual tests. And then go back to Coon Creek and say, the same. What we did was we surveyed those points in that we cleared to, to get to those spots, because it is heavily wooded. So we had to get equipment to the soil boring locations yesterday. The soil borings haven't been taken yet, but just the clearing to get there was done yesterday. We did call the city and make sure that was okay, because we've already done a tree survey to make sure that we've inventoried everything that's there. And we tried to, to push the equipment in where the, excuse me, where the proposed drive will be, so there aren't any additional trees lost as a result of this effort. So it's coordinated with our future effort, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner, anyone ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
I will make a motion. In Planning Case 21-8, we recommend approval of the proposed land use amendment based on the following. Number one, that the proposed comprehensive land use amendment is compatible with the adjacent comprehensive land use designation and land uses. That number two, the proposed comprehensive land use amendment will not have an adverse impact on the adjacent properties. That the proposed comprehensive land use amendment is supportive of the comprehensive land use plan, land use chapter policies for the city, including identification of underused non-residential sites that may be suitable for higher-density residential use. Another policy is to review and update the city zoning regulations periodically for residential districts to reflect changing lifestyles and ensure that infill development is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood in scale and design.
Chair Schwartz will second that.
Motion by Smokey, second by Navalock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and will be heard by the City Council at their May 18 meeting. All right. Now we have the second case, the zone change, Planning Case 21-9. We've already had information. I need to have a public hearing on this. So I will open a public hearing on this case. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none? And Zoom is quiet, I take it?
We now have one attendee who has not indicated they would like to speak.
All right. Last chance for a public hearing on Planning Case 21-9. Seeing none? We will close the public hearing and contain comments to the Commission. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
Are we ready to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay. So in Planning Case 21-9, the Planning Commission moved to recommend approval of the proposed zone changes based on the following findings. That the proposed rezoning to moderate-density residential, consistent with the proposed land use designation of moderate-density residential. That the proposed rezoning is compatible with the adjacent land uses and zoning. The times and conditions have changed, have changed so that a reasonable use of the property cannot be made under the current zoning. And the proposed zone change would not have an adverse impact on the area.
Second.
Motion by Smokey, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and will be introduced by the City Council at their May 4 meeting. All right. Moving on to other business. Mr. Harlecker, do you have anything for us under other business?
Yes, Commissioners and Chair Schwartz, we do have a full agenda for next month. We've got three conditional use applications for the property at 3050 Coon Rapids Boulevard. We've got another single-family residential plat and a site plan for a 152-unit apartment building over by the post office.
Did you say a site plan?
Yes.
For 150 units?
52 units, yep.
Well, sounds like we'll have a busy night. And Commissioner, anyone have anything under other business? Hearing none? We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Heikl, second by Geisler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody who wants to adjourn?